Mr Glasgow.
My lady, my lords, you already know that I have the honour of being led from behind by Mrs Strickland-Cutino.
Yes.
Might I just acknowledge that, because not only has she done all the real work for me, but she's also supported everybody else to the extent that she's been rightly complimented by all my loan friends. And I would like to acknowledge that.
Well, that's very gracious and appropriate. Thank you.
I think I ought to confess for myself as well that since this is undoubtedly, I've been assured, the last time I will ever stand up in court, I regard it as a singular honour to be appearing in front of this particular court. Would your ladyship permit me also to say that Mrs Strickland-Cutino and I also regard it as something of an honour to be representing the three interveners. The bodies whom we represent do have a contribution to make, we hope, although it is a very short and a very quiet one. It would be right to acknowledge, because as your ladyship may have noticed, a number of senior executives are present in court. An even larger number are participating online. When I say participating, I mean that, because those who are not within posted reach are within WhatsApp reach, and they've been contributing all the way along. They are, it's not just an amorphous bureaucratic body, any of them. They are individuals who devote their entire professional lives to providing mediation services and organising and training, not for profit and not for fat fees, but because they regard themselves, I hope rightly, as being an integral part of the administration of justice system, not some alternative that has been bolted on. Our concern has never been that anybody would get the law wrong. Apart from any else, we have complete confidence that this court would put them right if they did. That's never been our worry. We were directed, I hesitate to say mandated, but we were directed to make our contribution through the bar council, and of course we did, and we're very grateful to have done so. Not only do we agree with what Mr Viner has said, but I acknowledge, of course, that he put it very much better than I could have done. And I'm not going to trespass onto the law at all. We absolutely support everything that he said. And one says with respect to my learned friend, I'm afraid I still live in memory of being corrected by Lord Justice Stoughton, who said that that phrase was three lies in one half-sentence.
Well, so far as the law is concerned, do you support and agree with the submissions made variously on behalf of the interveners? There is no difference as a matter of legal principle in the approach to be adopted to ADR in what one could call the traditional sense, i.e. involving a third-party intervention and an internal complaints procedure?
My lady, we do, but we do so with humility, because of course that's not the area that we have special knowledge or can make a special contribution.
Understood.
And my clients wish to make that plain.
Yes, thank you.
They're not seeking to interfere. For what it is worth, we do think it's all part of the dispute resolution system, because it resolves disputes that would otherwise engage the court in what we think can be, not always, but can be, expensive waste of costs.
Understood. Thank you very much.
So having made it absolutely plain that it is with genuine, amiable respect for my learned friend that we absolutely agree with him on the law, we respectfully disagree with the eight points that we set out very briefly in our further submissions, which is page 47 of the submissions bundle. Before I get there, I wonder if you'd permit me to take the last first, because we think it's most important, and it's the word mandatory, because it's a word that has sort of crept in, and we respectfully wonder if it is helpful. It is certainly tendentious. If you want an Englishman, or I suspect a Welshman, to refuse to do something, it's often wise to tell him that it's mandatory, because the predictable response to that is of course, well, I was perfectly prepared to do it, because I thought it was quite sensible, but if you tell me it's mandatory, I won't. Mandatory is not a helpful word to use. And we note that when he comes on to the commentary of what mediation is about, Mr Viner, with characteristic candour, told your ladyship and my lords that he would call a spade a spade, because it is mandatory, and that's what I'm going to call it. He went a little beyond that, because he used his spade to do quite a lot of digging, because he actually uses the word mandatory, highlighted on a number of occasions, fifteen times in the course of his submission. Language is powerful, but not always helpful. And we did wonder where that all came from, because the word mandatory seems to have crept in unhelpfully.
And this is your sub-point H.
It is. It's the last. I apologise for taking it first, because the rest I don't even have a sentence on each to say, and I really will be busting you second only. Mandatory, we think, important, because I would not dream of hinting at blame on those who prepared the request for the call for evidence that your ladyship and your lordships will remember, which was handed up very late in the day yesterday, the 1175, I think is now in the bundle. And of course, we see in that the way in which integrated justice system is used. It is quite important perhaps to remember that the call for evidence, which of course was signed by my lord the master of the rolls and actually bore his photograph, which is what attracted everybody to participate in it. It's a beautiful document.
Now, Mr Glasgow, yes.
And this is not in any sense facetious or rude, but my lord will remember that in the very first question, we were asked to comment, the people I represent, on whether they thought mandatory requirement was a good idea. And the reason why we stress it is that in two of our clients, in replying to that question, ventured to suggest that mandatory might not be very helpful, because they saw themselves as part of an integrated system. And I don't know whether it was a result of that, but your lordships and my lady will have seen from yesterday, I think it's 1175, when the document was produced, when the report was produced after that process, the word mandatory was dropped, and what we will respectfully suggest the much more helpful phrase, integrated system of justice was adopted. I don't know when it first came. I'm sure that the credit for it must actually go to my lord the master of the rolls. We have tried to research, may I say, pretty well every single speech that we could find that has been made. And those that weren't in writing, Mrs Strickland-Cutino attended the Law Society in order to make absolutely sure that she heard Lord Justice's views as well. So we have really been quite careful to look at what everybody said. And my lord the master of the rolls may remember, I think it was March of 2021, in addressing the Hull University Mediation Centre for the first time, I think, actually stressing the fact that it wasn't mandatory, and I think it may be, and perhaps this does matter, the first time that anybody had publicly said that we should drop the word alternative and that we should use the word integrated. And that is why, and against that background, simply echoing what my daughter said, all three of my clients feel very strongly that everything that avoids wasted costs should be seen as an integral part of the litigation process, of the dispute resolution process, not as some alternative add-on. That's really all I wanted to say about that. Could I just very quickly, if I may, and I promise to be very short, and I will take you through the few comments that we make that start at page 88 of the supplementary bundle. And it is not in any sense of criticism, but where we say the bar council goes wrong here, and I'm sorry to use that word, they do go wrong, is when they start giving evidence about what happens in mediation. Because with respect, our clients know rather more about mediation than the bar council does. And we find it rather surprising that statements can be made about what happens in mediation, and what works and what doesn't. And what we want to avoid, if we may say so without any impropriety, the risk of that creeping into your ladyship and your lordship's judgment. Because we think it would be highly regrettable if misconceptions about mediation urged on you by, with great advocacy creep in. The first at A is the unjustified delay and disproportionate costs. And of course, we make the comment on that, that if any judge thought that mediation was unjustified and going to disproportionately cost, he'd say so, and he wouldn't order it. That is so obvious, it doesn't need stating. That's not a fault of mediation, and the control for it lies in the judge. The second point equally quickly is he said, of course, it is generally recognised that mediation is successful because it's consensual.
In part.
In part, yes. And then added, I'm sorry for the quick, that you must give careful considerations to whether mediation still has a realistic prospect of success. Well, the hint is that it may not, if the people are directed, we prefer to say the mandated, told that they've got to take part in it. In the mediation world, I hope it's not, sounds inappropriate, but there is something called the tomatoes test. Those of us that have brought up children, and those, I'm afraid of us who've brought up grandchildren, know only too well that rather like mediation, they can say, I don't need to try tomatoes in order to know that I wouldn't like them. And we have a lot of people who say that about mediation. I don't need to engage in it. I know I wouldn't like it. And the odd thing is that, as with children, when in fact you say, I'm very sorry, but despite your human rights to ignore the food that's been cooked for you, that is what is on the menu and that is what you will eat. It is surprising how many of them actually finish up liking tomatoes and liking and engaging in mediation. And it is wrong to start on the basis that because people may not like mediation when they don't know anything about it, they're not going to engage in it. The third point is equally misleading, I think with respect, because mediators are generally not under any sort of duty. I'm sorry, but all three of our clients fundamentally disagree with that.
And Mr Calipettis took us through the European case.
Yes. But my lady, my learned friend, Mr Viner dismisses it to some extent by saying, well, of course, that won't apply in all cases. Well, nothing is going to apply in all cases, but in the overwhelming majority of cases, where you are having accredited, trained mediators, they are very conscious of the obligation that all those of us who conduct mediation owe to unrepresented parties. And you've got, as you say, Mr Calipettis dealt with it better than I. D is again the question of unsupported, unrepresented litigants. And again, with great respect, those of us who do it feel quite strongly that mediators are really quite good at looking after unrepresented. It is part of the duty that is taught to them and it's their conscious of. It might be even more worrying in some cases that courts have to deal with unrepresented people. That it should not be held against mediation, that you shouldn't direct it because the unrepresented party may not properly be looked after by the mediator. That is a negative, unhelpful and inappropriate response to mediation. E is very short. It's just the particular stage. Of course, we accept that a judge must be free to make a direction in respect of mediation at the appropriate time and not an inappropriate time. That takes us nowhere. But again, if I may stress, judges make directions to people to do all sorts of things. They direct the experts to get together and to agree. It's terribly helpful to say, well, what kind of draconian order is going to be made if they don't? That's the wrong way round the periscope. You look first of all at what is the sensible thing for the court to direct? And the sensible thing to direct is if there is an available system, they should participate in that. So that's the state of the proceedings. The last that I have to deal with is, I think, is F, the suggestion, as we all know, and of course Professor Hazel Gens will be very good to point out, there are matters of principle that are not fit for mediation. We all accept that where there is a principle of law, it's not a good idea to leave that to mediators. That is a tiny proportion of cases. But the suggestion that public bodies should not engage in mediation because they are public rights is again wholly misconceived. It overlooks the fact, the best example is of course the Inland Revenue. And you will have seen the evidence that we got from them. Eighty-six point seven percent of cases they're referred to, and successful. So the tax authorities don't turn around and say taxation is far too important to trust the mediators. They go and listen to them, and they conduct mediations themselves. And that covers the point of a wider public interest as well. Those were the only points on which we respectfully disagreed with the bar council, having applauded everything that's said on the law. Might I add just one word about the Law Society, because Mr Cohen puts it so eloquently that it conceals the real mischief. The suggestion that in fact this should all go to legislation. Might I just respectfully remind the court that thirty years ago, the Law Society said the same thing about credit hire. And we tried to persuade, it's possibly the greatest blot on my indistinguishable career, that I let everybody down very badly when I failed to persuade the House of Lords of the real pernicious mischief of credit hire. And we were told that we'd overstated the case and that we should trust Parliament to make a law. Thirty years later, it has not. Thirty years later, the mischief that we predicted has built into a whole industry of disreputable lawyers trying to get the charges for hire cars that clients neither want nor need, solely in order to build costs. And the House of Lords shrank from the opportunity of putting that right and told us it was a matter for mediation, a matter for legislation. With the greatest respect, it was not, and it has proved not to have been. And that the Law Society can suggest that this should go to mediation and not be decided upon as a judge-made point, we think is unhelpful. My lord the master of the rolls understandably and graciously, of course, touched on the question of the economic drivers. And seen from the view of the mediators, may I just add one sentence on that. Of course, we accept that the economic driver may be trying to save money. But I wonder if we could just have the temerity to suggest it would be wrong for the court without evidence to assume that that is what local authorities are trying to do. Is it not at least equally possible that at a time when local authorities cannot afford to mend roads or to house the homeless, they may have a legitimate interest? Not in chiselling down money and saving, but in actually trying to put things right, pay a proper fee, and what they're actually trying to save, the economic driver in that is trying not to be responsible for the costs of thousands of cases that are wholly unnecessary. If we are going to speculate about economic drivers, we might take at least that possibility into account without actually presuming that they're up to some kind of mischief and trying to get away with something on the cheap. That's really all so far as Halsey is concerned. Would your ladyship and my lord just forgive me for saying the suggestion that Lord Dyson got it wrong is perhaps a little unfair? Could we perhaps, because the word has been used on numerous occasions, in the obiter that he was persuaded to make, it is now said that that was, it's polite in Latin, per incuriam, insofar as there was a fault. Fault lay in those who suddenly and improperly sprung an argument on him that was not pleaded, was not even in a written submission, and was against his instructions from the Law Society. And both those judges have graciously and honourably accepted publicly that they probably stepped too far in exceeding to that, what was described by Lord Justice Ward as the silken advocacy that persuaded us to go down the wrong track. It's not my job, of course, to defend anybody. Might I just say, perhaps one would be forgiven in my position to say that we come to praise Lord Dyson, not to bury him, because it is otherwise rather rude and unfair to suggest that this is all his fault. We ask your ladyship and my lords to put it right. If there's anything else that we can help with, we will of course do so. But I think I have exceeded my five minutes anyway, and I apologise.
Well, thank you very much, Mr Glasgow, without necessarily agreeing or accepting everything that you have said. Of course, your submissions have been very, very helpful, as indeed have all the submissions of all the interveners. So we are very, very grateful. Thank you.
My lady, thank you so much.
Any other questions? Thank you.
My lady, might I rise not to respond to what Mr Glasgow said, but to deal very briefly with a question which I rather ducked yesterday, which came from the master of the rolls. It'll take me no more than three minutes.
And Mr Weir, you've been put on notice of this, have you? All right. Yes, yes, Mr Viner.
It was the question about broader economic factors and how they come into play. The first point is parties' behaviour in litigation is obviously very often driven by their economic interests, and there's nothing wrong with that. The fact that solicitors and counsel can take cases on no win, no fee basis adds further complicating factors, because there may be cases in which what the rational thing to do from the point of view of self-interest is affected by the funding model. And the fact that you cannot essentially get costs pre-action, combined with the fact that the pre-action protocols impose ever more costly pre-action steps, complicates those balances still further. And we suggest therefore that a prudent judge will bear those factors in mind when assessing the reasons given by parties for not wishing to mediate, or perhaps for saying, we don't think mediation will get a result at any particular stage in the proceedings. And in particular, a prudent court will be conscious of the fact that recoverability of costs will be a factor that might, in some circumstances, cause a party to be reluctant to settle at a particular stage. But in the factors we suggested in our skeleton at paragraph thirty-five, we included the views of the parties as the settlement and the likelihood of settlement. And because those factors feature on the list, we don't think that it would be necessary for anything more to be said, because these issues of the broader economic factors will be at the back of a court's mind, perhaps at the front of a court's mind, when it hears what the parties say about their attitude to mediation at a particular stage.
Thank you very much indeed. Thank you. Yes, Mr Weir, I believe finally your moment has come.
Well, I'm extremely grateful, lady, and my lords. My lady, I was proposing to outline by way of seven headings, which needless to say, given an opportunity to delay, has increased to eight, the essence of the case that I'm wishing to promote to the court today. And can I start with the first one? It's just my way of outlining so that you have some idea of my intended direction of travel, which is to identify the reality of the defendant's case, at least up to the time of oral submissions yesterday, when it appears significantly to have changed. Certainly in writing, the defendant sought to make it a precondition to the claimant bringing his claim in respect of his civil right that he proceeded unrepresented through the defendant's ICP. And that if he failed to do so, his claim was liable to be struck out.
You've just given me a reference to the written paragraphs that you referred to.
I will do, lady. I'll bring, I'll go back. This is just, this is outline. And orally, yesterday, it would appear that he's seeking an order to stay for one month to allow the claimant to consider pursuing the ICP, which is materially different, failing which, the claim will continue apace. So identifying what aspects of the deputy district judge's decision the defendant criticises and what the defendant seeks on this appeal is crucial, not least because it frames the scope of the appeal before this court, an issue to which I will repeatedly need to return, because the scope of this appeal is limited. Second issue, my lady, that I wish to go through is to refer to the key cases addressing the effect of an impediment to the claimant's right of access to court by virtue of a compulsory complaints procedure. And then my third heading is to set out for the avoidance of any doubt the claimant's position in relation to Halsey. Our fourth submission is that if the ICP is designed to redress something different from the claimant's civil claim, then the court cannot make engagement with the ICP a precondition to litigation of the claimant's civil claim consistently with the claimant's right of access to the court. That is, if you like, hard-edged. Fifthly, if on the other hand, the ICP is designed to address the second of the claimant's civil claim, then the defendant cannot complain on the facts of this case when the claimant put the defendant on notice with a letter of claim and gave the defendant ample opportunity to respond and to try and settle the claimant's claim.
Going back to your fourth point.
Yes, my lady.
Is that a new point?
It's the point, my lady, which we set out in our additional written skeleton argument on Friday, my lady.
Yes, that's right.
And on a Wednesday afternoon, we provided the other parties with the case of Peters, and for the avoidance of doubt, I was instructed on Tuesday afternoon. So apologies for the lateness, but it's a consequence of the incident of the timing of my instruction, my lady. So fifthly was on the facts. Sixthly, the key difference between a letter of claim and the ICP being that a claimant is expected to be unrepresented through the ICP. This factor alone makes mandatory recourse to the ICP non-compliant with the claimant's right of access to the court. Again, hard-edged. And seventhly, multiple additional factors coupled with the non-recovery of legal costs makes mandatory recourse to the ICP incompatible with the claimant's right of access to the court. So I highlight the lack of legal representation which suffices of its own. And then, and then as my seventh submission, I draw out other factors, because of course essentially one has ultimately to look at them in the round. Hence, and contrary to the learned deputy district judge's finding, the claimant cannot be held to have acted unreasonably by seeking to obtain access to the court.
Is there a respondent's notice? There's no respondent's notice.
My lady, my lady, I was at life that issue on being instructed, and perhaps unwisely, I don't know, but decided I could put in an addendum skeleton argument, but might struggle to put in a respondent's.
Not on that point, because your first skeleton filed by your junior says exactly the reverse. If I remember it correctly.
I cannot, apologies, my lord. I cannot dispute that which your lordship observes. I can invite the court to see the basis of seeking to uphold decisions below on a fundamental basis which strips away the finding the judge makes, because it's unsustainable when the court recognises, if the court accepts the claimant's case, it's unsustainable for the learned deputy district judge to identify a claimant who is entitled to access to court and does so as having acted in those circumstances unreasonably.
And our fourth of your skeleton, which you have not abandoned, says finally by way of preamble, respondent acknowledges that the judge found in paragraphs forty and forty-one of the judgment that the respondent acted unreasonably. That is a finding of fact which the respondent has not sought to challenge by respondent's notice. Rather, it is an argument on costs for another day. My part at least, Mr Weir.
Yes, my lord.
I think you're bound by that statement.
Well, if your lordship so holds in relation to this appeal, at the very least, I would invite the court to address the reality of the position, given this is obviously going to be a judgment of considerable importance, so as to explain the real position that underlies findings that can and should be made as to the recentness of the claimant's conduct.
Is there any explanation as to the timing of your instruction, Mr Weir? No. All right. We know what the argument that you would like to advance is. I don't think much more would need to be said about it. And you've heard what my lord the master of the rolls has to say about paragraph four of your skeleton argument.
My lady, yes. I do, I do understand that. Perhaps I should have put in a respondent's notice at that eleventh hour. I expect I would have met the same flack as I've met in relation to not.
Well, it would have been exactly the same, but it's more than a respondent's notice. It's a change of position, isn't it? It's a fundamental change of position, as my lord has highlighted.
My lord, my lord the master of the rolls has highlighted it. I seek to invite the court to look behind a finding to the basis upon which it can be shown as a matter of law, not by way of a challenge to the exercise of a discretion by the court. It's not, or an evaluative judgment. It was not a respondent's notice to say the evaluative judgment. It's a, it's a part of our case to say fundamentally, a claimant is entitled to... a claimant is entitled to access the courts and shouldn't be punished for having done so.
Right, anyway, you've made the point and.
My lady, yes. The last, the last submission I was going to make, my lady, is that the current position, namely the claimant's decision not to engage in the ICPs in matters to which the court can have regard on the issue of costs as a general proposition, strikes a fair balance. And the drawing of any other balance is a matter for the legislature, not respectfully for this court. My lady, in relation.
Sorry, it's my fault.
Yes, my.
The current position in the claimant's case on.
The current position in relation to, for instance, Halsey, the current, the current position in relation, we say, to the civil procedure rules, is that this is a matter which can at large be taken into account on the issue of costs. The issuing of a claim form without having, for instance, gone through an ICP, not an issue for staying or striking out for the reasons that I've already sought to outline, but will obviously enlarge upon, it's an issue for costs. I'm saying it's an issue for adverse costs for the reason I've just given, despite having failed to put in a respondent's notice, but I'm saying it's an issue for costs rather than for staying, let alone striking out the claim. Any other step that may or may not be taken in a discreet area of civil justice is a matter for the legislature. My lady, can I turn to the reality of the defendant's case?
Yes, point one.
The supplemental bundle, paragraph or tab five, page seventy-one, sets out the application notice. If you can kindly turn that up.
Yes.
It's supplemental bundle, page seventy-one, my lady.
Yes.
And you'll see in the middle under box three, it says, what order are you seeking to make and why? That the claim is stayed for three months or such other period as the court thinks fit for the parties to engage in alternative dispute resolution through the use of the council's, I'll just simply call it ICP. So that was the application notice and it's slightly difficult to, from the wording, to engage in. Sounds mandatory, engage in as opposed to have time to consider. That looks to be the thrust of the application that was made. If one then goes to the way in which the learned deputy district judge approached matters in his judgment, that's in the core bundle, my lady. Tab seven, page forty-eight.
Which paragraph?
My lord, it starts at paragraph thirty-three, please. In the middle. And my lady and my lords will see that there the learned district, deputy district judge is essentially identifying what it is that's being asked. Secondly, the nature of the application is clearly different. I'm being asked to stay proceedings, not for the purpose of giving disclosure, but essentially with a view to compelling the claimant to engage in a particular form of ADR, which is consistent with the use of the word engagement in the application notice.
Well, it's not, is it? I mean, actually, the application is to stay it for such a period for the parties to engage. It does not say to mandate the parties to engage or even direct the parties to engage. It says to, for the parties, which, which certainly, I would say on normal reading, means to enable. I mean, it would have to be a much clearer order if it were to be mandating that they did engage.
My lord, this is, this is part of trying to identify what it is that's happened, because when one looks at para thirty-three and then again at paragraph thirty-six, then a district judge at the bottom says, however, if Halsey remains good law.
Now, I see he says that, yes.
Yes, this doesn't get around a difficulty for the defendant. It would appear that I cannot compel the claimant to engage in any particular form of ADR. And if you go over the page, please, paragraph thirty-eight. And this is part of what on the observations of the court yesterday forms a part of the ratio, if you feel like, or the process of reasoning of the learned deputy district judge, hence it being a part of the ratio of this court, if this court seeks to overturn the assessment in relation to Halsey. So that's where I'm tracking it through, my lord.
Yeah, I mean, I was going to ask you whether you quibbled with something I've done, it's not, I haven't shared it with my lady or my lord, as to the issues. And I identified four issues and it would be helpful to know if the parties disagreed with them. Was the judge right to think that Halsey bound him to dismiss the council's application? And that's the one I think that is the first one. And that involves the question of whether it's part of the main reasoning. And then if not, can the court lawfully stay proceedings or order the parties to engage in a non-court-based dispute resolution process? Which, these are what the bar council has addressed, I think. And if so, this is the third one, how should the court decide whether to stay proceedings or, or order the parties to engage in a non-court-based dispute resolution process? And that involves consideration of the relevance of the kind of process being considered. So whether it's the ICP or mediation or something else. And finally, should the judge have exceeded to the council's application to stay these proceedings? And I've put to allow Mr. Churchill to pursue a complaint under the ICP. And you are now saying to make him do so.
I'm not saying to make him do so, my lord. I'm seeking to identify.
Yes.
That I'm facing fixed cases.
Yeah, no, I mean, I see the point and yeah, it's, it's a question.
My lord, I do appreciate the value of those four questions that I would invite the court to approach the matter in a different way.
You, okay, yeah. Well, you'll tell us what way you do invite.
Yes, my lord, which is via the ICP, not via mediation, because it's not a mediation case. I do understand the point about the learned deputy district judge said Halsey.
You will address the point that I put to everybody else.
Absolutely, my lord.
Which is, is there a different legal regime? Yes, applies to independent, non-court-based dispute resolution as opposed to something like an ICP or even mediation or not. And all other parties so far have submitted not.
Lord, I will.
Legal questions and tests are the same.
My lord, yes, I will address that, but and I wouldn't, I wouldn't say it was the wrong question to ask, but I would say there was a better question to ask. And the better question to ask is, what is the position in relation to an ICP? Because that's the subject matter of this appeal.
But if the legal premise is the same, then.
Well, it's not, for the avoidance of doubt, I might, sorry to interrupt, my lord. For the avoidance of doubt, my case is that I'm not going to simply stand up and say, yes, I agree.
You're not.
I am not, my lord.
No, okay. Well, that, that's good, something to argue about.
My lord, yes, but I. My lord, that's where I've already sought to set out. What I emphasized were hard-edged points.
Yeah.
In my opening salvo.
Mr. Weir, can I just understand a slightly different point relating to what you was putting to us? Is it this, that whatever, whatever one might conclude was the legal effect of the order, would have been the legal effect of the order the judge was being asked to make? Submission you're making is the judge approached the order he was being asked to make on the footing that it would have compelled.
My lord, yes. In one sense, my task is slightly different from the court's task. I mean, well, profoundly different.
Profoundly different.
But in terms of the issues that I seek to address come from a slightly different angle, because I just seek to, I'm going to give my assessment in relation to the whole of the law covering this issue. But this court needs actually to go through the various hoops of understanding in relation to this case. What it is that was before the court, what the judge determined, and therefore the scope of the appeal in relation to challenges, depending on what it is that has been put in issue. And I'm rather, I'm rather seeking at this stage, if I use the word identifying those matters, because ultimately they'll be for the court. I have a set of submissions which cover matters come what may, if I can put it that way. But I, but I simply seek to emphasize that the court will need to take great care to seek to unravel the combination of the application notice, that which we're reading in the learned deputy district decision, that which we're about to see in written documents on appeal, and that which your ladyship and lordship's heard yesterday. That's all. So paragraph thirty-eight rather completes this, because paragraph thirty-eight, and now on page forty-nine of the core bundle, my lady, is where the learned district judge says, I therefore conclude I have no power to make the order sought by the defendant, at least in so far as it seeks to compel the claimant to engage with its complaints process.
So this is thirty-eight?
Thirty-eight, my lord, page forty-nine. And I then go to the grounds of appeal, so that's.
That's what I was going to ask you to look.
My lord, yes. But we're going through it, hopefully logically. So that's in the core bundle and it starts at page fourteen. It's tab three for others who are not electronic. In fact, my lady, maybe not electronic. So it's tab three, page fourteen. And the court can see, paragraph one says, erding concluding that the decision in court was all prevented in from staying the claim so as to enable, now we're in the language of not engagement but enabling, that's what's put there, the parties to use the appellant's internal complaints proceedings. And then two, alternatively for this judge was correct, the decision should have been clarified to take account of the change in circumstances, et cetera. Three, a proper consideration of the CPR allows the court, A, to stay premature and unnecessary claims to allow the parties to resolve their disputes through alternative dispute resolution and where appropriate over the page, B, to stay or strike out claims in which a party is found to have acted unreasonably, refused to engage in a designated form of alternative dispute resolution. So even if what they were seeking was to, for the claimant to have the opportunity to engage as opposed to a compulsion to engage in the internal complaints procedure, the sword of Damocles overhead was that the court had the power to strike out if the claimant elected, brackets, unreasonably, not to engage in the ICP.
I mean, the problem with this formulation is that it's not what they asked for. And so it's quite hard to see, if you've asked for something at first instance, which is a stay, you can then appeal on the grounds that you could have struck out. I mean, it's, it's very interesting and it may be right, but it's not the substance of the appeal.
My lord, that is, that is my primary submission in relation to the granular issue of the issue before the court.
But the substance of the appeal is, did Halsey bind the judge to reject the application for stay?
My lord, yes, and I don't shy, as I say, from making overarching submissions. So it goes rather to, do I, do I, do I stand up and say, well, on the close questioning from my lord, the master of the rolls, significant concessions were made orally yesterday. Ergo, I do not need to address the issue of strike out. Well, I'm going to address the issue regardless, because this court essentially will do as this court sees fit, albeit I invite this court repeatedly to exercise the greatest of caution in any observation this court makes, which this court considers to be outside the strict ratio of the appeal. And I would, in those circumstances, pray in aid the experience of none other than Lord Dyson, famed for his accuracy in relation to the law, who, as the submissions I'm going to be making and following others, respectfully came slightly unstuck in relation to an observation he made in this thorny area engaging, as it does, the right of access to the court. So bold or broad statements are respectfully, even from a court composed as this one is, not encouraged by the claimant. I hope that's taken in the spirit in which it's intended.
We'll see, yes.
Obviously, as, as we've agreed, my lady, I can say what I say, but you will do what you do.
And put in mind of leopards and spots, Mr. Weir.
The skeleton argument in support is at page twenty, paragraph eleven. So I'm in the core bundle, my lady. Page twenty, paragraph eleven, in the middle. The judges should encourage putative claimants to engage in ADR options and prevent them from commencing litigation before they've done so. It's the language which is employed.
So where is that?
It's page twenty of the core bundle, my lord.
Oh, yes, so, yeah.
Paragraph eleven at the top. Well, I would say the top hole punch, but possibly not electronically, but you know where it is, even if it's not there, where it would be.
I got it, yeah.
And if you can then kindly go on to pages twenty-eight to twenty-nine. Yes, of course, I can finish the sentence. I'm asked to finish the, finish the sentence. Unless they can demonstrate reasonable grounds for refusing to engage, that's the brackets, unreasonably part that I've already sought to make clear. Paragraph thirty-seven on page twenty-eight, right down at the bottom, the last part of para thirty-seven on page twenty-eight. The court should also be entitled to make an order that the claim should remain stayed until the claimant has demonstrated engagement with the ADR process and to strike it out if they unreasonably refuse to do so. So that's the case being made in the skeleton argument. Yesterday, my note of the question from my lord, the master of the rolls, you don't say the court has power to stay proceedings indefinitely until the claimant behaves reasonably. Response, no, I don't. Which is at odds with that which I've just.
Oh, could you repeat that, please?
Yes, of course, my lady. Per my lord, master of the rolls, you don't say that the court has power to stay proceedings indefinitely until the claimant behaves reasonably. Response, no, I don't. Further, oral submission, the court does not have the power to strike out the claimant's claim, which is not of a piece with the position taken by the bar counsel. That was my learned friend, Mr. Calipettis, yesterday. Further, the defendant was only seeking a one-month stay, after which the claimant's claim would proceed. And the claimant could simply ignore the invitation to proceed for the ICP. The one-month period was to, quote, allow the claimant to reflect on whether to let the defendant onto his land. So that offer having been made, engagement with the ICP is now reduced to deciding whether to accept the defendant's offer. So respectfully, it is not entirely clear the case that I'm being presented with and expected to respond to. But I do start as does my lord, the master of the rolls, at least by way of observation today, with that which the defendant sought by way of his original application, because again, that should limit the scope of any ground for appeal. In any event, whatever the precise position in this appeal, can I make these further preliminary submissions about the nature of the defendant's case? Stroke the broader issue before this court relating to ICPs. The ICP is a costs-free process. In other words, the claimant cannot recover his legal costs through it. So unless the claimant's expected to fund his own legal advice, which is respectfully simply unrealistic and unfair, the ICP necessarily proceeds on the basis that the claimant will be unrepresented.
That's what I was going to ask you about. It doesn't say anything about him being unrepresented and nothing is stopping him having a lawyer, but he has to pay for it.
Absolutely, my lord, which is the same thing as stopping him from having a lawyer in the real world.
But could he claim his costs under the ICP?
No, my lady, it's a cost-free process.
But I mean, if, if he said, and what's more, I've had to incur these costs and I want to, I complain about that and please pay me for my costs. Is there anything in the ICP, which is a very loose document, to prevent the council from saying, yes, and we're going to pay your costs?
My lady, can one just stand back just for one moment? The whole appeal is proceeding on the basis of the defendant's. The whole appeal is proceeding on the basis that the defendant's case entered this cost-free zone, this is cheap, it's efficient, and it doesn't involve legal costs.
Yes, you're right.
It is antithetical to that position for the defendant then on the bench to make noises to suggest divorce.
Well, they have, I don't think they have, it was my suggestion.
No, I'm dealing with the-
There were noises there.
I'm dealing with the-
Right.
Old school litigation, in any event, but that's, I'm sorry, that won't wash.
So you say it won't wash, but, you know, it's, unfortunately, Mr Ware, we live in a world where pre-action, generally you don't get costs. Now, there is an exception to that, and that is under the old RTA portal and the new whiplash official injury portal, rules of court and practice directions provide, and my lord will correct me if I'm wrong, provide for fixed costs at various stages when cases settle within those, what one might call, ADR mechanisms, pre-action portals. But generally, it is understood that there is a watershed at issue of proceedings. But, just let me finish.
Yes, my lady.
The direction of trouble, if I can put it this way, is that it is not thought that that should stop parties or stop even the court encouraging parties to try to settle their disputes before they get to court. Otherwise, we, the courts, would be deluged with cases where people could quite easily have settled but chose not to because they wanted to recover fees for lawyers, which probably they didn't need. Now, that's not a position you're advocating.
No, my lord, with great respect, my own experience is entirely to the opposite effect. It is a commonplace in personal injury litigation, a commonplace never to issue proceedings and to settle with the recovery of costs. That is exactly how we don't lead to a deluge of litigated personal injury claims in this country, because that's precisely what happens. The default position is the opposite of, and you don't-
There have been six hundred and fifty thousand claims brought through the official injury portal since it was initiated in May twenty twenty-one, and many of them have not concluded yet, but the costs that are recovered for those that are concluded are fixed and on a very small scale.
Absolutely, my lord. That is an example of Parliament stepping into the arena and legislating for a particular scheme with its own set of rules. And if, that is exactly what happens. And if a party wishes to say that scheme at a legislative level is incompatible with rights, a party's at liberty to challenge it, either in the way that happened in unison or by seeking a declaration of incompatibility.
But it hasn't been challenged.
No, I'm not saying it should have been, my lord, I'm saying that's the appropriate mechanism there. Outside of that legislative scheme, in the ordinary world of higher than the most modest value, for instance, personal injury litigation, which I specialise in and therefore will speak to, not housing disrepairs, which I don't and won't, but in that area, which is a very large area of cases, as this court well knows, it is the rule, not the other way around, that a defendant well understands that it needs to pay the claimant's costs pre-action as well as the claimant's damages in order to achieve settlement of that claim. That is across the board. And how, I might ask, could it be any other way?
What even, I mean, just to come back to my lady's question, what, I know you objected to it, but what is it in the ICP that says you can't say, I've had to have lawyers to tell me whether I had a nuisance claim under this knotweed, for this knotweed problem, and if you're going to settle, maybe an offer, you must include my legal costs?
My lord, there's nothing to stop someone asking, nothing to stop someone asking. At the same time, it is absolutely plain that there would be no offer in relation to costs.
Why, why is that?
Because the whole case proceeds on the basis that it's a costs-free zone, it's set out-
Where does it say that?
No, no, the case, I said, I didn't say, my lord.
So just so you know, once you look that up, I'm looking at page nine of the policy of the exhibit. Top of the page, it says, if you have lost out as a result of a mistake on our part, we'll try to put you back in the position you would have been in if we'd done things properly. So I think, I don't want to detract you because I know you're going to take us to the way the case is being advanced.
Yes, my lady.
But the point that, in fairness, I put to you, there's nothing on the face of the policy that excludes the possibility of costs recovery.
I understand, my lady.
But that's not the case that's being advanced, you say?
Well, it's not just, it's not just not the case that's being advanced, it is to depart from the reality.
Right.
And this court should never depart from the realities. This court has always got to keep its feet firmly on the ground, not to look at a document and say, well, this document is so open-ended, anything could happen under this document, ergo, you must go under this document.
But we haven't got any evidence, have we, about costs recovery under the policy? We've only got the way the claim is being advanced.
We have the defendant's skeleton argument at page twenty-seven of the core bundles.
So let's look at that, let's look at that.
Paragraph thirty-one A. The council's internal complaints, which is the appropriate form of alternative dispute-
Sorry, just pause, sorry, page?
Yes, my lady, I'm in the core bundle.
Thank you.
Page twenty-seven, paragraph thirty-one A, in the middle of the page. It is costs-free to the parties.
Yes. Well, that means it's, you don't have to pay to go in.
It would be a little short of stunning were this court to proceed on the footing that there is any real intent by the defendant, any, at any, at any part of the process that has started with the letter of claim being issued, to pay the claimant's reasonable costs.
I get all that, Mr Ware, but you're really asking us to let the tail wag the dog. Dispute resolution cannot be about paying lawyers. Dispute resolution is about solving people's problems. And this is, whether it's a good system or a bad system, we can argue about it and you can make your submissions, but it's not automatically a bad system because somebody who has a very run-of-the-mill complaint, wishes to follow it through the council complaints procedure, hoping settlement will be reached, can do so without cost to them. We can't assume that everybody needs a lawyer in every case. And I asked about economic drivers.
Yes, my lord.
And your submissions are sort of putting me in line of the fact that this is what happened here. We think, don't we, that Mr Churchill didn't think of making a claim until somebody, a lawyer, suggested it to him. Now, we can't allow that tail of the dog to wag it so that it's all about the legal piece.
My lord, respectfully, the, there's a witness statement confirming that the claimant went to lawyers. If a person goes to lawyers, one can expect he's-
In response to an advert.
My lord, this goes back to some pretty remarkable criticisms which have been made of a system of funding litigation established by Parliament. And the court respectfully again-
Are you referring to Mr Glasgow's submissions?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Mustn't lose sight of the fact that Parliament elected to remove legal aid to replace it with something called a conditional fee agreement. It elected to invite a commercial market in relation to litigation.
Yeah, and nobody, not nobody in the court has done more than listened to what Mr Glasgow said.
My lord, yes.
But it is very important nonetheless to keep one's feet on the ground, as you yourself say, Mr Ware.
Yes, my lord.
And this is not all about lawyers, this is about resolving disputes for real people. And I just urge you to bear that in mind when you're making your submissions.
My lord.
It's not to say that legal costs don't arise and have to be dealt with in some cases, but it's not all about that.
My lord, your lordship is of course absolutely right. If I could go back to the case that we are dealing with, one of the submissions I need to make, and I make it now, is that this is a case in which a claimant needs and/or is entitled to legal advice in order to pursue his civil claim. And the easiest way to establish that is by reference to the terms of the defence. And the court will find that in the core bundle at page one hundred and seventy-four. So tab eleven, page one hundred and seventy-four.
And whilst we turn that out, one thing that was occurring to me is, it's one thing getting the knotweed treated, but it's another thing realising you might have a claim for diminution in value, as well as an example of something where you might need a lawyer to help you. Understand that.
I'm extremely grateful, my lady. On the ground, the defendant's position is, we'll not pay you costs. What we'll do is, we will use our system of spraying, which has not worked, though we've been doing it since two thousand and eight, and we'll do it on your land too. The claimant, that's the position, that's factually accurate.
But can we decide?
You don't, your logic doesn't need to, but there's been, there's been so much, an attempt to sway the court by reference to these sorts of matters.
Well, speaking only for myself, Mr Ware.
Yes, my lord.
I have not been swayed by anything to do with the spray working or not working in relation to knotweed. And if it is said that this ICP is simply about whether the knotweed should be sprayed, I'm not swayed by that either, because this is a dispute which plainly concerns more than spraying knotweed. It concerns spraying knotweed and settling with your client for whatever damage he suffered, whether big or small, and there seems to be quite a disagreement about whether it is big or small.
Well, as the learned deputy district judge set out in his judgment, the claim is for forty-two thousand pounds. I know it was downgraded on the learned friend, but the claim is for forty-two thousand pounds.
Is that right?
Yes.
I thought the district judge said, and you haven't put in a respondent's notice, that it had been reduced to ten thousand pounds.
I would have, if I, that I may have missed that, but it's certainly what I read was that he identified at paragraph nineteen, page forty, five, the damages claimed in the particulars of claim are up to forty-two thousand eight hundred and forty pounds.
It's gone down, I think, if you followed the paper trail through, it's down to about twenty-five, I thought, maybe ten. Anyway, we can, we can follow that through.
My lady, my lady, yes, but, so, my lady has already made a key, a key observation in relation to understanding your legal rights. In relation to the case, both the merits and strength of the case, a brief glance at the defence will show you the sorts of matters which have been put in issue between the parties. So what defence starts at page one seventy-four, and if I can go through it quickly, at one seven five four A. Did it encroach on, did it encroach on the defendant's land to the claimant's, or in fact, the reverse? Five E at one seven six, has the claimant adopted the nuisance? Five F over the page, has the claimant failed to mitigate his loss? Six C, is the defendant under a duty to inspect? Seven A, is the defendant aware of state of knowledge? And when was it aware in relation to the incursion? Seven D, in the middle, denies that it's liable because it didn't encroach, it encroached from other lands. And eleven A, whether it's responsible for any diminution in value?
If I was playing devil's advocate, one could say this just demonstrates the vicissitudes of commencing litigation. Because the moment you commence litigation, I'm just putting it to you-
Yes, my lady.
You get into this engagement where frankly, a defendant will take every properly available argument. It can, in putting it all in a formal defence. But in an ICP situation, if the claim is relatively modest and for whatever other reason, the council are perhaps not engaging its own lawyers, I don't know, but will take a broad brush view and, without being over legalistic, and say, we're spraying in this area anyway, no harm in offering to spray the claimant's property, and there's a diminution in value claim for low thousands in the grand scheme of things, we'll pay this one off.
My lady, I don't say there isn't an ICP that's available for a claimant to elect to use in a cost-free environment, there is. And a claimant who elects to use it will see what outcome comes from triggering the ICP, but we are dealing with the right of access to court. And the right of access to court says that I am bringing a claim for damages in respect of the tort of nuisance, and I seek to pursue that claim, and if I pursue it, that is the defence I met with. I am entitled to legal advice, self-evidently, because that raises ample issues well beyond the ken of the normal person. And that's the relevant consideration at this stage of the inquiry in my respectful submission.
And foreshadowing your subsequent, with your submissions you're going to come on to make, you say this is all linked to your point that you've failed on with the deputy district judge about the scope of the ICP, where it's really about services, not claims in nuisance.
Yes, my lady, your ladyship has already-
Links with that.
Already made that observation, we say respectfully entirely accurately yesterday when questioning the issue of services, absolutely we say that. And absolutely I'll come on to it.
Just for your, just for your note, it's paragraph thirteen D of Mr Calipettis's skeleton that says in the witness statement attached to the claimant's solicitor's application, the diminution in value in claim was reduced to nine thousand pounds.
The submission I was making was that, which I respectfully say that in the face of the further observations of the court, remains exactly as per, is that the defendant is thereby inviting the court to set up a barrier, temporary or otherwise, to the claimant's right of access to the court, requiring him first to proceed unrepresented through the defendant's own ICP. And I've got to the requiring by reference to saying it's cost-free and that therefore in the real world, that's what it requires. And the whole purpose, this is an important submission, the whole purpose of engaging with the ICP must be with a view to a large number of complaints and potential civil claims resolving. Otherwise, it wouldn't deliver on its promise per the defendant to provide an efficient, i.e. cheap, alternative to litigation.
Chief?
Yes, of course.
Mr Ware, you carry on.
Thank you.
Because I missed it. Sorry.
That was to provide an efficient, that is, cheap, alternative to litigation. So the claimant is expected to participate in the defendant's ICP and to consider settlement without legal advice, or as I will come to later, without any other, brackets, i.e. expert advice, with a defendant which is at liberty to consult its own in-house legal team, failing which certainly as per the appeal written case, the claimant's claim can be struck out. And that is the full effect of that which, at least in writing, the defendant has been seeking on this appeal. Can I then go to my second submission, which was to have regard to relevant legal cases or authorities? But before coming to that, can I seek first of all to clear away judicial review cases, like the Queen on Cal, the application of Cal, the Lord Wolfe judgment, or quasi-judicial review cases like Hammond and University College, which you were taken to, which we addressed briefly in our further skeleton argument by reference to another case showing that it itself is quasi-public law, that's the higher education. And we say that because in judicial review, as this court knows, the claim is discretionary, you need permission to start a claim, the remedy is discretionary, and furthermore, there is a long-established rule that the claimant must exhaust his alternative remedies. that the claimant must exhaust his alternative remedies. And that includes, can I take you here, please, to that which Lord Wolf had to say in R and Cal? So we're now in the authorities bundle, page thirty-seven. Thirty-seven of the authorities bundle, tab three, please. Paragraph fourteen, towards the bottom, please.
Yes.
It appears that one reason why the wheels of litigation may have continued to roll is both parties were under the impression that unless they agreed otherwise, the claimants were entitled to proceed with their application for judicial review unless the complaints procedure on offer technically constituted an alternative remedy which would fulfil all the functions of judicial review. This is too narrow an approach to adopt when considering whether an application to judicial review should be stayed. Parties do not today under the CPR have a right to resolution of respective contentions by JR in the absence of an alternative procedure which would cover exactly the same ground as JR. The courts should not permit, except for good reason, proceedings for judicial review to proceed if a significant part of the issues between the parties could be resolved outside the litigation process. That is a JR-specific rule or guidance, call it what you will, from the Court of Appeal. And there are literally dozens of cases.
More than that on this.
More than dozens of cases. There are so many cases on that. So one should not respectfully be led astray by case law relating judicial review. Turning now to an ordinary civil right, a claim for damages. The first case I wish to go back to is the case of Unison, which is at page two seven six of the authorities bundle, tab eighteen, for those using tabs. Two seven six, I'm going straight back into the part, as you were taking to yesterday, where Lord Reed heads it, the constitutional right of access to the courts. And in terms of internal complaints procedures, which are a precondition to the issuing of proceedings, can I invite the court, please, to go to page two seven nine at the bottom, paragraph seventy-eight? And your ladyship will see, this is still obviously Lord Reed. Most of the cases so far mentioned were concerned with barriers to the bringing of proceedings. But impediments to the right of access to the courts can constitute a serious hindrance, even if they do not make access completely impossible. More recent authorities make it clear that any hindrance or impediment by the executive requires clear authorisation by Parliament. And can you then please read on the rest of para seventy-eight, referring to one House of Lords and one Court of Appeal case? And then paragraph seventy-nine, please.
Yes.
So there, as the court sees, the House of Lords and the Court of Appeal, as approved by Lord Reed in the Supreme Court, came down hard on a requirement as a precondition to issuing either to go through, as precondition, either to issuing or to the obtaining of legal advice to go through some form of the defendant's internal complaints procedure.
So Unison was, involved two JR claims, but these paragraphs are dealing with, you describe them as ordinary civil rights.
Well, one of them is ex parte Anderson, it's itself a JR claim. But it's an A4 diorite point because even in the context of JR. But Raymond and Honey is not. So.
It would help me, Mr Ware, if at some point you could say where you depart as a matter of principle from the three principles that Mr Vinal submitted were the law and the theory.
My lord, there may be a misunderstanding on my part. I thought the question you asked was in relation to his factors as opposed to the three parts.
Well, do you disagree with the three parts? Three questions, in other words.
My lord, it's not so much a question of disagreeing. We don't get to them if the internal complaints procedure is aimed at a different target. And we don't get to that.
But what you're doing is picking out little parts of Unison. When I understood Mr Vinal's submission to be that Unison effectively supported the regime established by the European Court of Human Rights and the European Court of Justice.
Well, my lord, picking out little bits is one way of putting it. Referring to court, to referencing a House of Lords case and a Court of Appeal case in which, as you can see, prison rules that required an internal complaints procedure step to be taken. Yes, my lord?
Yeah. What Mr Vinal said, and I think you know, was that there were three stages. You had to look whether it did provide, I can't remember the precise word, an impediment to access to the courts. And then you had to look whether it was for a legitimate aim. And then you had to look whether the actual order may would be proportionate to that legitimate aim. Do you say that's wrong?
My lord, if the internal complaints procedure is aimed at a different target, it may be that that language doesn't quite capture it.
For a moment, and I understand completely why you are targeting ICP and this ICP and these facts, and I understand that. That may or may not be a legitimate approach, but on the broader issue, let's just talk about traditional ADR, whatever you want to call it.
I am sorry, lady.
Do you agree with the three submissions?
I'm very grateful.
Impairing the very essence, no legitimate aim at all, if legitimate aim has to be proportionate.
Lady, yes, if one is dealing with the dispute, and this is a mechanism for alternative resolution of that dispute, as opposed, I might put it, to a resolution of an alternative dispute. Your ladyship's with me on that?
Carry on.
Then absolutely, the constitutional right of access essentially mirrors Article Six and invites the court to understand whether there has been a real impediment. Because a real impediment is as per paragraph seventy-eight that I've just read out. Can itself a serious hindrance can make access not completely impossible, but still be a relevant barrier? And then there is the twin test. But that sort of comes at the second stage because you can see by seventy-nine going into eighty of this judgment. So seventy-eight and seventy-nine is saying, here are two examples where the highest court and the Court of Appeal were not satisfied that there was legislative basis for interfering even temporarily with the right of access to the court. And para eighty then says, even where a statutory power authorises an intrusion. And then essentially, that is a legitimate aim and proportionality test. And so that is the correct analysis in our respectful submission, which does require us to go back, as I'm going to, as planning to at the end, to the Civil Procedure Act, section one. To look at the legislative source before I make a submission, as I proposed to at the end, that the court may have a power to stay under twenty-five four, but it doesn't in relation to the ICP.
Well, okay. I mean, it has a power to stay for ADR, doesn't it?
My lord.
I mean, under twenty-six four, ADR is defined very broadly in the glossary to the CPR, to include everything.
The civil, apologies. The civil procedure rules cannot create a power which is contrary to a claimant's right of access to the court. It's just not there.
So your case is that the civil procedure rules are ultra-valued?
That's not what I've said, my lord. I haven't said that at all. There's a power under twenty-six five, as it now is, to stay in multitude of circumstances. What the court doesn't have the power to do, for the reasons which I've sought to set out already and then get larger upon, is to stay for a failure to engage unrepresented in a defendant's internal complaints procedure. In other words, our position is absolutely different from the bar council. This is not an invitation for district judges up and down the country to face a multitude of applications for stays by defendants for failure to comply with their multifarious internal complaints procedures, to be met with a host of different outcomes by different district judges. Because this court can pronounce, on the back of that which is an issue in the appeal in this case, that the invitation or requirement to go through an ICP is inconsistent with the claimant's right of access to the court. For the reasons which I've sought to articulate already in outline.
All ICPs.
Well, my lord, I myself have invited the court to exercise some caution in relation to the ambit of that which the court decides. So it is difficult because essentially, I would say, in relation to this case, because this is the case before the court. And then I would simply rather leave it to the court. I would say, please exercise great caution before going any further. And you either stop there or you go further so as not to be met with a barrage of appeals in relation to a multitude of different cases in which this is nevertheless seen as an invitation to stay proceedings for failing to go through an ICP, even if not this one. But that would be rather a matter, again, in the hands of this court. Paragraph eighty-two on page two hundred and eighty-one. Can I just invite the court to note that in the case of R and Daly, Lord Bingham identified the importance of the right of access to legal advice, however obvious that may be, at C. Among the rights which in part at least survive imprisonment are three important rights, closely related but freestanding, each of them calling for appropriate legal protection, the right of access to a court, the right of access to legal advice, et cetera. And then just over the page, page two hundred and eighty-two, paragraph eighty-five, can I simply seek to emphasise near C, the words of Lord Justice Dyson, albeit in a different context, but they are important words applicable here, stated that the impact in that case of fee orders, but in this case of requirements, whether it's to engage in or consider ICPs, must be considered in the real world. And then your ladyship will see at two eight three, how the test, if one is through there being a relevant piece of legislation that allows you to do this, the test, as you can see at the top of two eight three, is a test that materially mirrors the Article Six test. Unlawful unless it be justified as reasonably necessary to meet a legitimate aim. Can I then take the court, please, to the Momchilovic in Croatia case? And there you've been to it, so I don't have to rehearse the facts of the case. It starts at page five five four, it's tab twenty-nine. This was a case in which the European Court of Human Rights was asked to consider whether there was an unlawful interference of the claimant's right of access to the court and held that on the facts of that case, there was not. And the circumstances of the case are important to understanding the scope of the European Court of Human Rights decision. And can I please emphasise these circumstances? First of all, the applicants had a right of action, a civil right of action against the state. Secondly, it's apparent that they were legally represented. We know this because it was the lawyer who failed to comply with various requirements in relation to the first hearing, that's at paragraph thirteen at the top of page five five seven. Croatian law, and you get this at page five six seven, no, five, sorry, five five nine. Five five nine, paragraph twenty-four. If you can see under section one eight six A, just under the first whole punch, your ladyship see that?
Yes.
You see, it says, "A person intending to bring a civil claim against the Republic of Croatia shall first submit a request for settlement to the competent state attorney's office." In other words, this doesn't suffer, as I say, the ICP does in this case, from not seeking to meet the target of the claimant's civil claim. This is a precondition to litigation that the claimant invites the defendant to make an offer to settle the claimant's civil claim. And the next point is, the state was required to respond with what's described as a friendly settlement, which is essentially an offer, within three months. And you see this at page five six seven. Five six seven, paragraph fifty-three, first sentence. The next point is, during this time, the limitation period was suspended. Five six seven, para fifty-two. The next point is, the applicants brought a claim which owing to the failings of the applicant's lawyers was held to be withdrawn. That's page five five seven, para thirteen. And the applicants were then entitled to and did bring a further claim which was identical. Five five seven, paragraph eighteen. If you go down into the quote from the county court judgment, the last paragraph on page five five seven starts, "It is not in dispute that the plaintiffs on five March nineteen ninety-eight lodged an identical claim against the same defendants before the Zagreb Municipal Court." Yeah, in other words, they were on their second bite of the cherry. See the observation of my lord or justice burst yesterday in relation to, in this case, to the effect of a withdrawal as opposed to a strikeout. So against that factual backdrop, which is crucial, the European Court of Human Rights held that mandatory submission to a request for settlement was compatible with Article Six. So based upon that European Court case and recognising that the constitutional right of access to the court is materially in the same terms to Article Six, where there is legislation which sets as a precondition that the claimant seek and trigger the making of an offer by the defendant, which I suppose could be an offer of nothing if they were so minded, with all of the control mechanisms in place that I've identified, then in that case, there's no incompatibility with Article Six. So that it cannot be said as a complete statement that any requirement under any circumstances to go through an invitation to the defendant to settle in advance of litigation must be incompatible with Article Six. The as of necessity, any requirement must be incompatible with Article Six, cannot be said in light of this case. But it is deeply sensitive to the legislation and the protection which is afforded surrounding it. So that's the Momchilovic case, which I'll then come back to, but that's what it determines. And can I then, as part of the second string to my bearing relation to the legal matters, go to the case piece of Peters? And that's in authority bundle two, for those who are in bundles. It starts at page one 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 two, one 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 two. And we've sidebarred the relevant passages which start at page one one two eight under a heading set out by Lord Justice Dyson. The second issue is the claimant entitled as of right to choose damages rather than provisioned by the council. So the issue in the case was, can the claimant seek against the defendant damages for the consequences of personal injury by way of care costs? The defendant can access for free care from the state. And the defendant says, you can access it from the state, you should do, and we're not going to pay. And you see at thirty-three and thirty-five, that's how the issue is. And you see at thirty-three and thirty-five, that's how the issue arises, and at thirty-three, Lord Justice Dyson saying, "It's trite, Lord, that if a claimant has distinct rights of action against more than one wrongdoer in respect of the same loss, he can recover against them all," et cetera. And then if you kindly go over the page, or two pages, to one-one-three-oh, para thirty-one, at forty-one.
Yes.
This is the case of the Liverpool, which is set out in detail at paragraph thirty-eight, in which, again, there was an opportunity to obtain funds from a board, but the decision was made by a claimant to proceed with his civil right in tort. And Lord Justice Dyson describes in forty-one, "It was a decision about the plaintiff's legal right to recover from whichever liable party it wished. The principle of claimant is free to choose from whom to recover compensation, has nothing to do with the mitigation of loss." And then if you then go, please, to one-one-three-three.
Para fifty-three, which you've got that.
Yes, my lady.
Yes.
And you've got that. And the claimant's submission is that that is of a piece with the submission I now make, which is, a claimant has a right, which is essentially an unfettered right, to choose not just whom to sue, but in respect of what claim. Because after all, my Article Six right gives me the right to proceed in respect of my civil right. So if there is an opportunity to proceed in respect of something different, so what? Because I am entitled to elect to proceed against you for my civil right, not for what you want me to claim against you for. That's my unfettered right. And to that extent also, it's why, forgive me, my Lord Master Rolls, but it's why I'm cautious in respect of simply saying, "I agree," in relation to the three points, because that is a different point, as it seems to me, in my respectful submission.
And I thought you had agreed that, subject to what you caveated, they were correct as matters of law?
My lord, my lord, that's the caveat. And then as a matter of law, it's two stages, as you can see, from unison seventy-eight to eighty. You've got to look at legislation, and then if there is a power, then you look at whether or not it pursues a legitimate aim and the...
So it's caveat, then your CPR twenty-fourth, twenty-sixth point, and then the three, yeah.
Can I now, my third submission is to set out our position for the avoidance of any doubt in relation to Halsey, sort of, A, the court may consider it, needs to hear it because it's a path of determination.
Mr. Weir, it would very much help me, because this is not dealt with in your skeleton, either skeleton, if you were to put into a short, one paragraph piece of paper, or in my case, electronic transmission.
My lord, yes.
The caveats that you assert.
Yes, ma'am.
So that we have your legal submission in a form that you would like it to be recorded.
Very grateful.
Thank you.
And apologies for not having provided it earlier, for reasons various, but in any event, that's where we are, and I'm grateful for that opportunity. So our position in relation to Halsey is that the status of the observations of the Court of Appeal regarding whether mediation can be made compulsory, go along these lines. First of all, we agree with the Bar Council that the observations were over-ta dikter for the reasons given by the Bar Council. Secondly, we note that the case of Momčilović in Croatia does not deal with mediation, but it does aggress compulsory settlement proposals. That is, an invitation to consider settlement without the benefit of a mediator. And given the European Court of Human Rights found that there was no breach of Article Six in those circumstances, it makes the position in relation to mediation an a fortiori position. Two CJEU cases are, in our respectful submission, also relevant. My Lord Master Rolls is of course absolutely right to say they're different, but they are relevant, and they're relevant because the CJEU also applies the test of whether an impediment pursues a legitimate aim and was reasonably proportionate. For the avoidance of doubt, you can see that in Alasani, if you kindly go to page five-hundred-and-ninety-four, tab thirty for those in tabs. Paragraph sixty-three. Sixty-three, my lady. Which I'd simply invite the court to read, please.
Sixty-three of the judgment.
Sixty-three, my lord, page five-nine-four.
And the point that you want to make is?
The point I was making, my lady, was in response to the observation of my Lord and Master Rolls yesterday, who said these cases are different. The point is, they're different, but they apply in the same test. And these are cases in which compulsory mediation, in the circumstances of that legislation in issue, was held not to be incompatible there with the right of effective judicial protection. Which is materially aligned to the convention right of access to the court. So that we would respectfully submit that Lord Dyson was right to have regard to the Alasani and other authorities when he made his careful extrajudicial statement, which I now invite the court to turn up. Starts at page seven-hundred-and-nine, it's Authorities Bundle Two, tab thirty-nine. You can see the heading at seven-oh-eight, in twenty-ten, a word on Halsey and Milton Keynes, and if you kindly go over the page to page seven-hundred-and-nine. I'm essentially going to invite the court, possibly not now for reasons of time, but to read from the middle of seven-oh-nine, should the parties ever be compelled, all the way through, to just below the middle of seven-eleven, where it ends, should not, in my view, be denied their day in court. I'm going to pick out some parts of that, but obviously, the whole needs to be read. Or I'd invite the court, please, to have consideration to that which Lord Dyson had to say, because what he says, he says with extreme care, and essentially, we agree. So Lord Dyson says, in the light of those authorities, if you go to page seven-hundred-and-ten, first new paragraph, so nearest to the top, four lines down, can your ladyship see? So it is clear.
Yes.
That in and of itself, compulsory mediation does not breach Article Six, and that's why, because he's referenced the...
Sorry, seven-ten?
Seven-ten, my lord, is the first new paragraph, starting Article five-point-one, and it's about four lines down.
Third sentence. Yeah, okay.
And that's why, it's a previous paragraph, because he's essentially recognised that things have changed, i.e., there's Alasani, and there's also, as we now see, the Momčilović case. He then says, that's at seven-eleven, oh, sorry, it's still at seven, sorry, my apologies, at seven-ten, he, right at the bottom, he says, the real question, three lines up from the bottom, "The real question is not whether a power exists to order mediation, it's rather whether the court should exercise that power." And then repeatedly through seven-oh-nine to seven-eleven, including, put very well at seven-eleven, for my respectfully to make that submission, right at the last part that I was going to invite this court to read, so if you come right down to the middle paragraph, and the last part of the middle paragraph, and you said eleven, but this is what he said before, it's a matter of emphasis, he says, "It doesn't seem to me that it is the role of a court of law to force compromise upon people who do not want to compromise. Parties who have a strong case and wish to vindicate that case rather than compromise should not, in my view, be denied their day in court." And that is essentially an echo of that passage that my Lord, the Masters of Rolls, asked questions in relation to, in Halsey, which was the second part of paragraph nine on page sixty-four, which is page sixty-four F, sorry to leap around. So I'm now back in, I'm in Authorities One, tab five, but I'm at page sixty-four, paragraph nine, what my learned friend, Mr. Vinal, described as the second part of paragraph nine, does my Lord and Master Rolls see that? "Even if, contrary to our view, the court does have jurisdiction to order unwilling parties to refer their disputes to mediation, we find it difficult to conceive of circumstances in which it would be appropriate to exercise it." It's a powerful statement, and it's not affected, as Lord Dyson has explained, in the most careful terms, between seven-oh-nine and seven-eleven, it's not affected by the new case law, saying that it's not as-on-as-of-itself necessarily a barrier to entry. And I would invite the court to adopt, that's all over-ta dikter as a matter for this court, and any observation from this court may itself be construed as a matter of over-ta dikter in relation to the issue, so I'll leave that in the hands of the court, that's the claimant's position. And the caveat that we have is that all of that mediation is all proceeding on the basis that claimant's legally represented. But if a claimant is not legally represented, in an ICP context, one can say, in any case in which legal representation, or, you know, in which a party is entitled to legal advice, see the difficulties in relation to nuisance claim that I've already made submissions on, as opposed to say whatever could be the most straightforward issue, issue going in relation to ten pounds, but in any issue in which the claimant would be entitled to legal advice, then at that early stage, one can say, and that is our submission, that that would simply be incompatible with Article Six, whether a professional client, deep into litigation, perhaps a firm of accountants, who chooses to be unrepresented, can be compelled to mediate when unrepresented, it's a different matter for a different day. So hence the difficulty in making sweeping statements, and hence my determination, please, to come back continuously away from the joys of mediation, to the realities of the ICP. Can I also, please, now just briefly address the issue of nomenclature, because it's come up in relation to ADR? It's evident that ADR has been used to mean different things in different contexts, and see even today, the observation from my Lord Master Rolls in relation to the glossary and civil procedural rules. So it's being used in different ways, and it undoubtedly would be helpful if at some point, whether, not necessarily through this case, one might have thought it would be through, again, the proper channels, if I can put it that way, through legislation, be it primary or secondary, clarity was provided and pursued through all relevant practice directions, civil procedural rules and the like, as to what ADR meant. But the truth is, it doesn't matter what title is used, because one knows that an ICP is different from mediation, because one has a third party and the other doesn't. So it's not an issue, in that sense, it's an issue of labelling. Whether ADR wins the day and covers everything or not, you still have to have a label for the ADR which has third-party involvement. So for the moment, I'm going to simply align ADR with third-party involvement and mediation, and say that this is not ADR, but I can understand that that's an open issue. For the purposes of this appeal, can I go back to the practice direction, to the pre-action protocol, because that's the only relevant document for this case? Whatever your journey through construction protocols, housing disrepair protocols and the like, there are no protocols for this case, you only have the pre-action, you only have the practice direction, which is at page six-hundred-and-fourteen of the Authorities Bundle.
Can I ask you whether you accept that the definition in the glossary, which is a collective description of methods of resolving disputes otherwise than through the normal trial process, I'll read it again, "A collective description of methods of resolving disputes otherwise than through the normal trial process," is competent to include the ICP?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, thank you.
That definition, as it seems to me, is the wide one, but it's not always employed. But on either, whatever the definition, the higher powers choose to apply, there needs to be one that distinguishes the third-party mediated process from the non-third-party mediated process.
Yeah, I get that. The reason I'm asking you is because now we're going to the practice direction where the term ADR is used.
Absolute, absolute.
In the CPR.
Absolutely, my lord, and it's exactly right, and my Lord or Justice Burst has already conducted an exercise in close forensic analysis of paragraph three. I'm going to give the court, if I may, at page six-hundred-and-fifteen, the opportunity to conduct similar analysis in relation to paragraphs eight and ten.
Eight? Sorry, what page am I on?
Sorry, my lady, page six-hundred-and-fifteen.
Fifteen, thank you.
Six-hundred-and-fifteen.
Thank you. Yes.
Six-hundred-and-fifteen starts, "Litigation should be a last resort," and I dare rail, I will simply bristle at that, because the right of access to the court means that statements to the effect, "Litigation should be a last resort," a hostage to fortune in my respectful submission, and part of the issue in relation to the difficulties which ensue when the court is diverted from recognising the importance of the claimant's right of access to the court. It then continues, "As part of the relevant pre-action protocol or this practice direction, the party should consider whether negotiation or some other form of ADR." Now, that language, I would readily accept on its face, would suggest that ADR is another, it says, "or some other form." In other words, negotiation is part of ADR. That's how one might choose to read that, naturally, I would accept that. Paragraph ten is different. Parties may negotiate to settle the dispute, or may use a form of ADR. And that would rather suggest that negotiating to settle dispute is to be distinguished from any form of ADR, including the forms of ADR which are set out at A to D. But really, one needs to remember that the EU and Liverpool City Council case, which is in the bundle at page ninety-two, so it's tab six for those with tabs, page ninety-two, that's ninety-two, paragraph forty-eight. "It is sufficient for present purposes to say, 'A practice direction has no legislative force. Practice directions provide invaluable guidance to matters of practice in the civil courts, but insofar as they contain statements of the law which are wrong, they carry no authority at all.'" So as much joy as could be had, from the forensic analysis of the practice direction, the real answer lies in the court's assessment of what is right in law.
But is this law? This is just procedure, isn't it? I mean, obviously, if they were overruling Article Six.
Yes, ma'am.
You might say that would be something else, but this is just procedural guidance. The parties may negotiate to settle the dispute, or may use a form of ADR, including their stated one. What's wrong with that?
My lord, I'm not here saying what's wrong.
No.
I'm saying, if and insofar as the practice direction is to be used as a relevant tool in the case to analyse whether or not an internal complaints procedure is incompatible with Article Six, it's rather the wrong way round. The right way round is to analyse whether an internal complaints procedure is incompatible with Article Six. Because if it is, then nothing changes per the practice direction. And so one doesn't get to the paragraphs thirteen to fifteen and start getting engaged with, when it says, "If you don't comply with ADR, your claim is liable to be stayed." when it says, if you don't comply with ADR, your claim is liable to be stayed. Because this is a practice direction, one goes simply to the Court of Appeal and asks them to analyse the accurate position in law. That's my submission, my lord. So that's, in answer to the question, hopefully, I may have answered this question already. I hope I have, whether, whether the differences are legally significant between mediation and an ICP. Yes, where the ICP is designed to address something different. That's my Peters point, if you like. Yes, if the ICP expects the claimant to proceed unrepresented in a case in which he would be entitled to legal representation in order to know his own case. And yes, where as a result of the collective issues I'll be drawing together at the end of my submissions, the ICP precondition is offensive to the right of access to the court. So my fourth submission, my lady, was that if the ICP is designed to address his complaint being something different from the claimant's cause of action against a defendant, then the court cannot require the claimant engage with that complaint as a precondition to suing in respect of his civil right or cause of action. The starting point is that no doubt the claimant has a civil right. That's his claim in nuisance. The damages, A, the cost of treatment, B, diminution in value of the property, and C, loss of amenity in respect of his enjoyment of the property. And it is worth emphasising that the claimant's civil right is one against a defendant qua neighbouring landowner, not qua public authority. And hence, see the observation of my lady, Lady Chief Justice yesterday, the ICP on its face looks remarkably like a procedure set up by a public authority in its capacity as a public authority, providing, open inverted commas, services. And that's page six of the exhibits. The court has that. So I won't go back to it. In any event, there is a very real issue as to whether the complaints procedure is targeted at the claimant's civil claim at all, as opposed to addressing his concern that the Japanese knotweed is actually in his garden. I.e., as the defendant repeatedly says, let me treat it. And in this regard, there is a witness statement from Mr. Bigwood. And that is in the witness statement bundle.
You'd be there last sentence. It's a very real issue.
Yes, my lady, as to whether the complaints procedure is targeted at the civil claim the claimant pursues, that is a claim for damages for the three heads of loss I've identified, for nuisance. Or is actually targeted in a way that...
It includes injunction, doesn't it, Mr. Weir?
It also includes injunction, my lord. Absolutely. Includes what's set out in particular claim, I don't shy from that, all, all that which is set out. Your lordship's absolutely right. It's additionally the injunction. Rather at addressing, in the classic complaints way, you're complaining about something, let me fix that something. I.e., in this case, let me treat it. And we get some insight into complaints procedures from Mr. Bigwood, who was a, or is a, an officer or solicitor of the Swindon Borough Council. And this is obviously in the context of housing repair claims. But it's in the witness statement bundle at page sixty-seven, my lady. Sixty-seven. Paragraph nine, my lord. Your lordship's already there, those are electronic, far faster.
It's not a race?
Oh, I don't know, my lord. The little victories that can. Paragraph nine, also while those payments may or may not be as large as those payable as damages in a claim, this must be viewed against the fact that, A, the ICP process sets out to achieve something different to litigation. It is more concerned with the tenant's wants and needs, et cetera.
This is a different ICP.
Oh, this is a different ICP. This is in relation to housing, housing disrepair or suchlike cases. There is what there is available, my lord. And that's part of the evidence which is available. And I've taken, I'm taking the court to it. A reality of, of how complaints procedures work is, even if the claimant fills in the box electronically or in writing and sets out a complaint by reference to a legal cause of action, it's open to the defendant to treat it as a complaint on a non-legal footing. It doesn't even matter if the claimant articulates it as a legal claim because the defendant still can say, well, I may look at it on a non-legal footing. For instance, as I say, as a criticism of a failure to remove knotweed or as a criticism of procedures or an issue of maladministration, which would be the classical one, hence going off to the ombudsman on issues of maladministration. And in that event, any precondition to accessing the courts to pursue his civil rights, that the claimant should first pursue something different, namely a complaint, offends against the principles lying behind Peters, on which I've already made my submissions. That is to be contrasted with all the mediation cases and with Momklovic in Croatia. When all those cases, the target of mediation, the target of the pre-action friendly settlement is the civil right. No doubt about it. That is not the position in relation, necessarily in relation to the ICP. My fifth submission, my lady, is that if the ICP is designed to address the civil right of action that the claimant wishes to bring in nuisance or damages and an injunction, then in this case, so I'm now case specific. In this case, the defendant cannot complain, brackets, other than in relation to the expenditure of legal costs, as a letter of claim serves the very same function as would a complaint triggering the ICP. And here I propose to take this shortly because my lady, Lady Chief Justice, made a series of observations plainly on the basis that my lady had this point already. So I will cover this, well, I hope, very briefly. So now I'm proceeding on the basis that the purpose of the ICP is to give the defendant an opportunity to meet the claimant's civil claim head-on, pre-action. And that is exactly what opportunity it was given by receipt of the letter of claim. And yet there's a chronology in the core bundle. I don't invite the court to turn it up now, but it's a page forty of the core bundle, which shows you that the letter of claim was dated the twenty-ninth of October, twenty twenty. And it was met with a letter of response of the twenty-second of January, twenty twenty-one, which is at page three of the exhibits bundle, page three. And in that letter, on page four, third paragraph from the end, page four, right in the middle. I've been the exhibits bundle, my lady.
Yep, I know it.
Page four.
Yes.
Paragraph starts in relation to the damages claimed, which are detailed in your letter of claim under the heading remedies. I confirm these are not accepted by the council. Save to say, the council agrees to continue to spray the Japanese knotweed, both on your client's land and on the council's adjoining land once a year until it's eradicated. A classic response to a complaint. And indeed, Mr. Calipettis yesterday accepted the letter of claim was, quote, treated as a stage one complaint. And it led to another letter, page eleven of the exhibits bundle, headed without prejudice, sixteenth of March, twenty twenty-one. The first substantive paragraph in the middle. We agree without any admission. Am I going? Page eleven of the exhibits bundle, my lord.
Thank you.
Sorry. Page eleven, middle of the first substantive paragraph. We agree without any admission of liability to include your client's property in any future spraying without any charge to him. This will eradicate the knotweed. So why your client wants compensation from the council for him to arrange for his garden to be sprayed makes no sense. That's their response. You bring a claim in damages, I don't want to pay it, let alone costs. But I will use my sprayers to spray your garden. That is the response to the complaint.
I'm sorry, I just can't see those words. It's on page eleven, is it?
Of the exhibits bundle, my lord.
I've got the exhibits bundle, I've got page eleven. It's headed without prejudice. Where is it in the...
It's, if you, if you go, the first sentence we ignore. The next paragraph starts in relation to.
Yep.
If you go down about six or seven lines, you get our previous letter on the left-hand side.
Thank you.
Yeah. Next three, three lines.
Yeah, got it, thank you.
And so we would respectfully echo the observation of my lady, Lady Chief Justice, that the ICP was exhausted. And this is a point made by Mr. Roger Iberes in his statement of twenty-fourth of February, twenty twenty-two. He's the claimant's solicitor in his witness statement. So if the witness statement bundle at page eight, this is not a new point. Page eight, paragraph thirty-two. Such letter clearly represents the final opinion of the council and it's uncertain how an online complaint would lead to a different conclusion being reached by them. And also see paragraph thirty-nine over the page, page nine. From which it must necessarily follow in our respectful submission, there can be no purpose or reason for imposing a stay now. We know the answer. The claimant does not need a further month to decide that the defendant's offer does not meet that which he seeks to recover in pursuit of his civil right of action. Nothing has changed. And that's a basis upon which it cannot be right to say, and I'm not seeking to rehearse the difficulties that the court says I face in relation to this case, but it cannot be right to say that the claimant in pursuit of those rights has acted unreasonably. The sixth submission, my lady, which I wish to make, is the real point of the dispute relates to the defendant's determination to avoid meeting the claimant's legal costs. But it is antithetical to the claimant's right of access to the courts to require him first to engage in an ICP as an unrepresented person with the real expectation that he will then settle his claim, his civil right. And it's difficult in our respectful submission to see any real difference between that position and the position the claimants found themselves in in Raymond and Honey in Ex parte Anderson, as referenced in the Unison case. The unfairness is clear. Claimant is expected to proceed through a procedure ready to compromise his legal cause of action. Otherwise, the cost savings of the ICP would be illusory. It wouldn't be an alternative dispute resolution in its broadest sense to the, to the claim because it wouldn't be having any intention to settle the claim. There's only, its only value in the context of this court's function is that it's, it, it makes for a more efficient management of the civil justice system. But this is in circumstances whereby virtue of the fact that the claimant is unrepresented, the claimant cannot know the strength of his case, nor the value of his legal case. Yet he's put in a position of being invited or expected to settle blind as to the legal merits of his claim. And that is wrong. Additionally, as put by my Lord the Master of the Rolls yesterday, obvious in the context of family cases, but it applies equally here. And my Lord the Master of the Rolls, there was, and this is my note of, quote of, that which my Lord the Master of Rolls observed, a tremendous risk of requiring unrepresented parties to agree to settle when they are not aware of their legal rights. For the whole purpose of an ICP or other settlement overture is to encourage settlement, it means necessarily that an unrepresented party will be exposed to the pressure to settle. But when the claimant has no legal advice as to the merits, strength or value of his claim, this is tantamount to coercion, however subtle. And that is hard-edged. And why in my respectful submission, certainly in respect of this ICP, and the court may or may not choose to give a clear steer in relation to ICPs more generally, where the claimant is expected to go through it unrepresented because it is living in an unreal world to invite him to do otherwise. Such a precondition to accessing courts cannot be compatible with Article six. Or, and or what Lord Bingham identified as the corollary constitutional right to legal advice, however you see it. And it additionally creates a two-tiered system, which does not feel right. If a defendant happens to have an ICP, and it is a happenstance in this case, because as I say, this is a claim against a defendant qua landowner creating a nuisance on the claimant's case, not qua public authority. And most landers would not be expected to have an ICP. Then the claimant is being required to go through the ICP unrepresented. And if not, he can obtain legal advice, issue a letter of claim, get a letter of response, take appropriate steps. See the observations, my lord, the Master of the Rolls today in relation to the practice direction, isn't it sensible? Of course it is, you know, issue your claim, letter of claim, get a letter of response, see if you can settle the claim. If you can't, issue. And all of that has been sidetracked out in favour of the happenstance that one defendant has something which it calls an internal complaints procedure. And then says must be a mandatory step, a precursor or precondition for litigation and when you're unrepresented. It is so unfair for the reasons that I hope I've now made clear. Seventh submission, my lady, if I'm not going too fast.
Well, you're not going to say anything more about seven? Because we have the submission, you've heard what my Lord the Master of the Rolls has said. We'll come back to you if we need to. This is the point about the finding of unreasonableness, is that right?
No, sorry.
One more different one?
It wasn't intended to be. It may be that I made it sound as if it was that point. It wasn't intended to be. This is, this is additional factors. I've drawn out the absence of legal representation as a key point in itself. And that, this is my point, there was multiple additional factors.
Right, so I noted that down as seven, I was wrong about that.
Yeah, no, that's, this is, this is it.
Right.
If that's okay, my lord. So this was additional factors which together, and together with the absence of legal representation, render the ICP a disproportionate fetter on the claimant's right of access to the court.
Right.
The first is, the ICP does not provide for a mediator or other neutral impartial third party, and so does not provide the protection that the defendant itself recognises a mediator of force to an unrepresented party. And here, can I kindly invite you now back to written submissions bundle? Page one hundred and three. Page one hundred and three of the written submissions bundle. Paragraph thirty. This is the defendant's addendum skeleton argument, my lady. Page one hundred and three.
Yes.
At the end of the paragraph about the benefits of mediation, it said, experienced mediators, when one party is unrepresented, will ensure that they receive legal advice before signing any settlement agreements to make sure that they understand the terms of settlement. And then on at paragraph thirty-two, Mertha Tidfield accepts that vulnerable or unsophisticated, unrepresented parties may well need legal advice before, during and after mediation. But not, it would appear, before, during and after an ICP, and that simply cannot be right. Secondly, my lady, the ICP does not provide any published or settled procedure by which it is to operate. All we have are the four pages, which I won't take the court back to at six to nine, in which, as per the observations of my lady today, the court can seek to read into, we may seek to make good any expense you've incurred or words that effect, and then one can try to read into these things. There is an entire lack of clarity. It does not have the statutory backing that exists for the ICPs in the housing claims. All we know really is, under the first stage of the ICP, the claimant's complaint is addressed by the manager of the department of the Japanese knotweed. And we get that from the defendant's letter at page seventeen of the exhibits.
Why shouldn't we just be looking at the ICP?
Well, my lady, yes, in some, I've... Yes, in some ways, my lady, but I'm seeking to identify that whilst the ICP just says it's a first stage, it doesn't say much more than that. We then have been given, so I refer the court to it, a letter which you can, you make of if I put it this way, what you will, but it's at page seventeen, if you've got it.
Yes.
In which, down towards the bottom after emboldened stage one, it says, if such a complaint had been received prior to your involvement, it would have been put before the manager of the department responsible for the Japanese knotweed eradication. And as your ladyship invites me to do, going back to the complaints procedure itself at page eight at the top, it simply says, a stage one complaint, also referred to as informal resolution, is the quickest and often the most effective way of dealing with your complaint. That's what it says, we just don't know. We're later told that is the manager of the Japanese knotweed department. And then it says stage two, and if you're on page eight, a stage two complaint enables you to escalate the matter if you remain dissatisfied with the outcome of stage one. Stage two complaints will be dealt with by a senior officer within the council and maybe independent for the service your complaint relates to. So it may just go to someone else in your Japanese knotweed department, we don't know. In fact, the letter suggests it would go somewhere different, same letter I've referred you to, but the complaints form doesn't make that a promise. It's not supposed to address, and I learned the deputy district judge said, oh, there's nothing in this, but it is not supposed to address matters going back more than six slash twelve months. See page seven in the middle. Hope I'm not going too fast. Page seven on the exhibits, my lady. How long the ICP will take is entirely unclear. There is a reference to twenty days, page eight in the middle. I'm in exhibits, page eight. We will aim to resolve concerns as quickly as possible and expect to deal with the vast majority within twenty working days. If your complaint is more complex, we'll let you know within this time why we think it may take longer to investigate. And indeed, the paragraph below that, if I'm not rushing, if your ladyship's on page eight, ladyship will see that it also says, in some instances, we may ask to meet with you to discuss your concerns. Occasionally, we might suggest mediation or another method to try to resolve disputes. So it is an open-ended process. It is absolutely not like the Momcilovic in Croatia case. Three months, boom. Furthermore, limitation is not suspended. Again, contrast with Momcilovic and Croatia. And that is not trivial when the defendant in its defence, and this is core bundle, page one hundred and eighty-four. One hundred and eighty-four, paragraph fourteen, says, additionally, in Safari's proceedings abort in relation to damage suffered more than six years before the issue of proceedings, your statute per. So it's an open-ended ICP, limitation is not suspended, and limitation is then taken as a point by the defendant. With all the legal niceties that that would involve in analysing what constitutes a damage, issues which are not straightforward, Malena Junior being offered to the Supreme Court in relation to the issue of damage, where the knotweed has encroached on your land before your relevant cause of action accrues. But that is a Supreme Court point. Furthermore, there is no provision for disclosure by the defendant unless it chooses to provide a document. This is happening at the outset, and Malena friend, Mr Calipettis, described how mediation is a trade-off between information and costs. And here, there is a requirement to go through an ICP involving no information and no costs. There is no provision for expert evidence or the recovery of costs in relation to, certainly by the claimant, which is needed in relation to the issue on breach and is needed in relation to the issue on damage, diminution in value. At the same time, nowhere does the defendant deny itself the right to consult its in-house lawyer. This is asymmetric in extremis. And this is just the defendant's own ICP. Another local authority will no doubt have a different one. There is no uniform or settled approach to the management of complaints under so-called ICPs. And the unfairness is respectfully overwhelming. My lady, I do have further submissions to make.
You're not under any time pressure, Mr Wood.
I'm very grateful.
Is that code for saying you're not going to be done in five to fifteen minutes?
It's not even that, oh, I see, not really, my lady, because also my lady friend has his right of...
No, I understand, I'm not stressing we finish today, I was just wondering whether you wanted to finish today.
I would be pleased to adjourn or to take the opportunity to start again at ten thirty tomorrow, if that's all right, my lady.
All right, are we safe to start at ten thirty tomorrow? We will be finished by one o'clock if we start at ten thirty tomorrow. How much longer have you got?
I, I, embarrassed as fifteen minutes, which you better not time my...
So a judge is forty-five.
Exactly, the German professor's academicus fettle, that means half an hour. But we will be ready to start at ten thirty tomorrow, my lady, and we will not go beyond lunch.
Okay, all right, that's very helpful, thank you all very much indeed for your...
That would be great, if my lady friend will send me a copy of history.
Oh, of course, of course, no question, but that'll go to everybody.
Of course.
Yes, thank you very much indeed, ten thirty tomorrow morning.